If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all right. Well, we'll live through it. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen, here. Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Bowling. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gertin?
Here.
Mr. Brayden?
Here.
We have six members present this evening. Just a reminder, with anything to suspend the rules and have all three readings, that would require all six members present voting in favor. Moving on to amendment of the agenda, we do have three items. We are removing L1. That is, the ordinance pertaining to cryptocurrency. The revised ordinance appears under M1. We are removing M5, since that is a duplicate of M3. And we are adding Communication 5, which is revisiting the Montgomery and Maple development for the senior 55-plus affordable housing development. Mr. Gertin?
Make a motion that we amend the agenda as stated.
Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Mr. Brayden?
I'll thank you, Mr. President. Can you say again where you're going to place the, our amended agenda for the low-income housing?
That will be Q5.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I know that that is a project that people have thoughts about and it's appeared in housing before. And so I know that the optics might be that that's sort of a late addition. I think just as a matter of clarity, that was a communication that was discussed last meeting. And the sort of deadline to respond is October 16th, so it's two days from now. So just wanted to contribute that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertin, seconded by Ms. Royce, is to amend the agenda as... Was that a question?
No, sir.
All right.
I had a moment.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to minutes of previous meetings, we have two sets of minutes. The September 23 regular meeting and the September 30 special meeting. Mr. Gertin?
Make a motion to accept and file as if read.
Motion by Mr. Gertin to approve the minutes as if read. Both sets?
Yes, sir, both sets.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no special presentations or public hearings this evening. We do have two requests to address counsel. The first is Bishop Sonny James.
Good evening, fellow Norwoodians. It is an extreme honor to be able to stand before each of you as the servants that God has chosen for this season to represent our community. I want to say publicly to all of the residents in Norwood that I certainly understand how sensitive things have gotten lately. And I myself have stood and been challenged. And I've had to switch my opinion on things. But I want the residents of Norwood to know that I would never sell you out. I would never abandon you or your heart convictions. But I believe God placed me in Norwood, Ohio, as many of you would address and know, to be able to responsibly challenge things that rightfully has needed to be challenged. But I have not just challenged inside. Many of my challenges have been outside of Norwood. There are many of you who sit here today that you can honestly say, we've had our good and we've had our challenges. But I can stand before all of Norwood today and say, we're still together. We are soon doing a Come Together event, and I want everyone in Norwood... Now, this is important that you get this flyer. Actually, I tried to email it. And then Susan Hoover sent me an email saying, "You emailed something, but there was nothing there." And those of you who really know me and my technical issues, you know that's kind of par for the course. So I decided to bring some flyers. Let me share something with you all. I want to showcase Norwood. I want to show the city why I have stood up even against peers to say how great Norwood is and how great Norwood can be. So all of you fellow Norwoodians, if you have not gotten the Come Together flyer, which right on the flyer it says, "It's not about white versus black. It's no longer about Republican versus Democrat. It's about us coming together." And what I'm challenging all of us to do is move your schedules. So on this day, when I say the greatest city in America I've been proud to be a part of, I don't want to be embarrassed. I know Norwoodians there. The mayor has walked with us in our Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth celebration. I am still hearing about that. Ladies and gentlemen, help me continue the press. Just before here, the chief was over at Corinthian with all of the police chiefs and a bunch of leaders from the city. But I knew I couldn't stay there because I wanted to address my own community. On October 30th, Come Together is for everyone. I'm having some email difficulties or user difficulties, but please email me, bishop s james, the number 12, at gmail dot com. And I want you, some of you, to sit on the panel so that we can show the city and we can show the state of Ohio. We can stand in disagreement, but it doesn't mean we have to stand separated. It's time to come together. And I'm asking all of Norwood, as I look at the clock, to come together with us, share this flyer and come out. It's not going to be in Norwood, but everything I do is about who? Norwood. Let's come together. God bless you all, and let's pray for the families. Again, we just had five more shootings, five more people affected by gun violence. My initiative is to address that. God bless you all, and we will have some warm food there, too, for James Bunsen.
Thank you. The next request to address counsel is Mary C. Miller and Meredith Whitehead.
Good evening. Some of you got a chance to meet Meredith, that meet the candidates tonight. I hope you had a chance to talk to her, but I'd like to formally introduce Norwood Together's new executive director, Meredith Whitehead. Meredith has over 15 years of experience in the community development field. As a founder and CDO/CEO of the Cedric Group, she's led multimillion-dollar initiatives such as the National Association of Counties Rural Leaders Economic Mobility Program and advised banks, counties, and nonprofits. She previously served as the program manager of strategic initiatives for the Federal Reserve Bank of Cleveland. Meredith holds board and advisory roles in Cincinnati and across Ohio, including organizations dedicated to housing, economic development, and statewide business research. She is a Leadership Ohio alum, former member of the Ohio Workforce Coalition's Leadership Committee, and a proud Bearcat. Bearcat alum. We asked Meredith why she wanted to come to Norwood Together. She said, "Because impact starts in local communities." Please join me in welcoming Meredith.
Good evening. I know I'm in Xavier territory, so I don't know. But I just wanted to thank you all for the warm welcome. I've gotten to meet some of you at Coffee and Candidates. I got to, or Coffee with Candidates. I've also gotten to meet some of you last week at meeting City Council. Over the past several years, I've worked nationally with small counties across the country, helping them strengthen local leadership and design local solutions to big challenges. What I've learned is that every community has its challenges, but also its own strengths and spirit. The real impact happens when people come together around a shared purpose. That's what brought me here and what attracted me to Norwood. There is such a strong foundation here and a strong sense of pride. And I'm really excited to bring what I've learned nationally to support the great work that's already happening here locally. So I look forward to meeting with you guys, having conversations, and working with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Snyder?
I'm sorry.
Can we do a question with you?
Yes.
One of the things that I have on my administrative report is talking a little bit about Worth Avenue and the collaboration between Norwood Together and what's going... Can you sort of get the group up to speed on sort of the efforts so far with Worth Avenue?
Yes. So I've only been here a week and a half, okay? But Worth Avenue really does have a strong history, and they do have strong foot traffic there with J&amp;W sandwiches, which is a... J&amp;W is recognizable. And I see Norwood Together as a convener. So today, Mary C. and Kyra, who is, she's an intern for the city of, uh, co-op, I'm sorry, UC co-op student for the city of Norwood. We were out there doing surveys and just talking to the residents to see, to gather some information and see, you know, what they would like to see in that neighborhood. It's a walkable neighborhood. They have parking. There is a lot of strengths right there, and it sits centrally between Bon Hill, Brookwood, and some other communities. So right now, just gathering information, talking to some business owners to see what opportunities are there. There's actually, what I would like to see as Norwood as a CDC is to acquire some of those buildings that sit there on that, in that two-block radius and really, to really serve the community and the demographic that's over there. So I don't have any set plans, but the work that's being done is talking to residents and surveying the area essentially and deciding what partners would be best fit to serve that area in the city of Norwood. So that's what we've been doing.
Mr. Brayden?
Can I join in here?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. That's awesome. I'd love to partner up with you for Worth Avenue. That's my part of town, and I'd love to get involved. First question is, I play ball with David Whitehead. He's president of the NAACP. Are we related?
We are not related, and everyone asked me that question, but we are not. As far as I know, I'm the last Whitehead on my side of the family.
I've been playing ball with David Whitehead for probably about 15 years, and I was, the first that came to mind, I was hoping you was, but as I'm...
My dad was a basketball player, so, you know, I played basketball back in my day. I played soccer for UC, but, you know, I...
Welcome to the...
Lucky lefty. Thank you. I look forward to talking to you.
My son's a Bearcat as well, so...
Oh, okay, okay.
I would just add one other thing. Kyra's been doing a market analysis for the Worth Avenue area feasibility study. She's worked with Hamilton County and so far the Port. And we had a great conversation today with the owner of J&amp;W Sandwich Shop, and he's very interested in something happening up there. So I thought that was, that was a breakthrough, so.
As is Coffee Emporium. So there's, there's some opportunity there for partnership, for sure. Thank you, guys.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have reports of standing committees of counsel. The first is Finance Budget Audit and Claims from September 23, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the Honorable City Council of Norwood, Ohio, we, the Committee of Finance Budget Audit and Claims, to whom was referred Stan Greenports, beg leave to submit the following report. The auditor's office is working on destruction of very old records according to our new records retention schedule. Our deputy auditor completed the public records, public records custodian training. The city has switched over to Palacity as its HR software. The tax department reports that earnings tax revenue is up 5% as of this time last year, and the committee will schedule another meeting to be held on October 14th to discuss requests in the budget processes outlined in the financial recovery plan. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Jeff Gertin, Mr. John Brayden, Ms. Emily Franzen, and Mr. John Moore. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to receive and file the committee report.
Motion by Mr. Brayden to accept the committee report. Mr. Moore?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, this is a Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee report from September 29, 2025.
Thank you, sir. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Housing, Health, and Public Safety, to whom was referred discussion of PLK Robertson South Development, beg leave to submit the following report. Three community members spoke at public comment and expressed concern about traffic, construction, and the need for an updated traffic study. One attendant spoke in favor of the development. There was a motion by Susan Hoover, seconded by John Moore, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Susan Hoover, Alexis Royce, John Moore, and John Brayden all voted yes, and the meeting ended with executive session. Respectfully submitted, Susan Hoover, Mr. John Moore, Mr. John Brayden, and Ms. Alexis Royce.
Thank you. Ms. Royce?
I move we accept the committee report.
Motion by Ms. Royce to accept the committee report. Mr. Gertin?
A second?
Seconded by Mr. Gertin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to second readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is a resolution declaring the necessity to levy a renewal tax for current operating expenses in excess of the 10 mil limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover?
I make a motion. We have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the second reading of the resolution. Mr. Gertin?
Second the motion?
Seconded by Mr. Gertin. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I think just for a sort of a clarification matter and prepositions for Mr. Moore, the law director, something that appears in the caption of these is basically that declaring the necessity to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation. But then further down in Section 1, it makes reference to a number that is, I think, like eight mils. And so I guess I just wanted to clarify, is it that the 10 mil limitation is sort of an aggregate number in the city as opposed to any individual one of these surpassing 10 mils? It's like the combination of all of them that cannot surpass 10 mils? And it's in such a case that they do, that is where it is necessary for it to become a ballot measure? Do I have that right?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. The way I understand it is we're automatically get 10 mils. It's just by default, the city gets 10 mils. Schools get, I mean, there's, there's, here's a basic bottom minimum millage that you automatically collect, subject to the annual, we do the, the tax budget, which allows us, we have to justify that we're actually going to use the millage we get, and if we don't, then we can give some back. But that's what it is. But if you're going to do more, you got to put it on the ballot, and that's what this is. And this is to put it on the ballot. The eight mils is what was to raise, whatever it was, a million and a half or something back in 1980 something. But, so this is a renewal of that. So it's not eight mils on new value. It's eight mil... It's that dollar amount that it was back then, re-divided up. Although new construction can increase whatever that dollar amount is. So now we collect more than we did back then, although it may not be net because back then it included personal property tax, and that doesn't exist anymore. But this is basically to renew the five-year levy, operating levy that the city has in place now and has renewed every five years since the mid-'80s.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mr. Gertin, is to have the second reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the resolution.
Resolution declaring the necessity to levy a renewal tax for current operating expenses in excess of the 10 mil limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution declaring the necessity to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges in the city of Norwood and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen?
I move we have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the second reading of the resolution. Ms. Royce? Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling? I'm sorry, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the resolution.
Resolution declaring the necessity to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for general reconstruction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges in the city of Norwood and requesting the city, or the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
We had them turn off the construction noise outside during that reading.
Thank you. All right. Well, now move over to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance amending Part 7, Business Regulation Code of the Norwood Codified Ordinances to add new Chapter 773 Cryptocurrency ATM Warning Requirement and declaring an emergency. Ms. Royce?
I'd like to suspend the rules in all three readings.
Motion by Ms. Royce to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Just as a matter... So on this agenda, there was another item that was sort of a duplicate that was a little bit of a source of confusion. And then I think the fact that this appeared as both L1 and then M1, like I guess it wasn't clear to me sort of which one this was. And so in my mind, there's, I guess, some confusion about if we canceled the one from two weeks ago and we've introduced sort of a refreshed one, what's different? How should we think about that? And I think before it didn't have an emergency clause, and now it does. If you could just speak to some of those points.
Ms. Royce?
That's all I did, was I just requested the law department to add an emergency clause. It would go into effect two weeks sooner than if we had suspended the rules previously because we have to publish it for six weeks, and this make, the emergency clause makes it immediately effective.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I was hoping you could put up the visual aid. It's not a great image, but this is a picture of what would be on the, the stop sign. That's an image of what would be on the, or above the ATM machines. I thought it was helpful for folks to have a visual of it. I love that it has a local number. And Ms. Royce suggested I watch this movie, Thelma, and I'm going to encourage everyone to watch it for a couple reasons. It came out last year, and it's about a 93-year-old who is scammed out of a lot of money. And it's a very, if you can imagine, it's an action comedy. It is light while still talking about some really challenging awful things. But one of the things I, was important for me to share is since I've recommended this movie to folks, so many people have told me about their own experiences being scammed, one of which was $70,000. And it was, and these are in these Bitcoin machines. They absolutely target our elderly, but that is not the only vulnerable person. They catch you off guard. It's a very aggressive, deceitful practice. And while I understand that the small businesses that tend to use these for some additional income, we, I feel strongly we need to balance that with making sure that folks are fully informed because once that money is gone, it is gone.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Royce?
I would just add, if anyone is concerned as well about the signs going up, this wouldn't stop any sophisticated consumer from buying crypto. If you want to, if you want to buy crypto, you can buy it. You don't have to go to an ATM. You can get it online, you can get it with your bank account money. There's no reason that anyone's only method of buying crypto is putting cash into an ATM to buy it. It's just not. This should not affect any sophisticated consumer who wishes to participate in this. I won't say. Who wishes to participate?
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
With a vote of five in favor and one against, we do not have the six votes needed to suspend the rules, so that motion fails. Mrs. Franzen?
I make a motion, we have the first reading of this ordinance then.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the first reading of the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is through the president to Mrs. Royce, please. Are we under the impression that all cryptocurrency is scam? Is that what I'm getting here? I'm trying to figure out where, I'm trying to follow the
It's not at all with this.
Ms. Royce?
No.
I'm just curious. I was just trying to figure out, like
I won't include any of my personal feelings on it.
Okay, all right.
This is, I mean, people are getting scammed through these machines.
I didn't mean it.
No, no.
I was just curious, completely, one of them saying curious, like I had no idea. I was just curious what was your thoughts on that, sorry.
Any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, thank you. And to be clear, like, I'm not, not against, you know, this, this measure and taking extra, you know, precautions. I guess I, I think just some of how this has unfolded and whatnot feel a little better going slowly on it. And is it, is it accurate to say that, is this, this is a mock-up? This is not the precise thing? Ultimately, it's the discretion of the police department of what goes there?
Ms. Royce?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Sorry. And Ms. Royce, can you just talk about, let's, let's say, like precedent for this in other municipalities in Ohio and that sort of thing?
We would be Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mr. President. You caught me out of order. No, we would be the first in Ohio that I'm aware of. Council Bluffs has done this, as well as Omaha, Nebraska, I believe. I always forget which city it is in the south, but I believe it is Omaha. We looked at both of them on the committee and landed on this one being, we, we copied Council Bluffs a little more. Council Bluffs, Iowa, which I think they are larger than Norwood, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I would just say, again, I'm not, I'm not outright opposed to this legislation. I just think, I don't feel comfortable passing it tonight is really my reason for voting no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance amending Part VII Business Regulation Code of the Norwood Codified Ordinances to add new Chapter 773 Cryptocurrency ATM Warning Requirement and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item is an ordinance amending 62-2024, which superseded ordinance 51-2024, which superseded ordinance 47-2024, which amended ordinance 18-2009 implementing Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code to establish a community reinvestment area in the city of Norwood to revise certain procedural requirements and reflect changes in state law and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover?
This is my copy. Love the name. This, I would request that we put it into the Economic Development Committee. This is the discussion about the number of residences before it would be considered commercial, sorry, units, before we consider it commercial. So I would really, we've talked about this on council floor, but I would really love our Economic Development Committee to take a real deep dive and decide what, as a community, we think is best. So I don't want to make any motion on this except to put it into the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is an ordinance accepting the city of Norwood Fire Hydrant specification. Mr. Gertner?
Make a motion that we have the first reading of the ordinance?
Motion by Mr. Gertner to have the first reading of the ordinance? Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
Since he's here, I was wondering if Mr. Chief McCabe would like to come up and tell us what this is.
Chief McCabe?
Good evening. What you have before you, before you tonight is actually collaborative work between the Norwood Public Works Department and the Fire Department. Superintendent Zimmerman, Jimmy Grubbs were heavily involved with this, along with Assistant Chief Cianciolo and Captain Meyer, who was in charge of the fire hydrant program within the Fire Department. What we wanted to do is in terms of just to establish by ordinance a hydrant specification so that there was no question in terms of a development came in, started putting in fire hydrants, that we knew what was going to go in instead of having a hodgepodge. It also will allow the city in terms of when they start looking at planning for massive fire hydrant replacement programs, or they're looking at grants that gives them an idea exactly what they want to utilize. Safety Service Director was very supportive of putting this out and having it just nailed down. What you see is actually two different fire hydrants that meet the same specification. So just kind of string combines it for, for road crews, development, anything that goes on within the city and makes it law.
Any further questions? Mr. Gertner?
Is there any reason to expedite this process? Are you okay having all three readings over time?
I think, I think it's certainly up to you. We did not request an emergency clause. We feel like with the current projects that have been going on with fire hydrant installation, we've kind of met that. We don't foresee anything imminent in the next, let's see, you got four more weeks to do this after this. So no, there's no need for an emergency clause.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Chief, is this, we talked in the previous meeting about kind of the need for, for all of your equipment to be as standardized as possible, you know, so that in the heat of the moment, you guys could act as swiftly as possible and not have sort of variance in equipment? Is this kind of an extension of that line of thinking? That there would be more sort of uniformity in the actual hydrants? And is that in any way, just out of curiosity, is that ever sort of a problem in terms of variation between hydrants, in terms of like the ability to quickly deploy your resources to put out a situation?
Sure. Within the city now, it's, we're pretty much standardized in terms of what we have. You may see a different connection type to the new fire hydrants coming in. You'll see a more of a chrome metal front, I'm going to call it steamer. And that's just for a quicker connection. It's not the threaded, what you're used to seeing. As we travel outside of the city, yes, that is an issue. But primarily, this is more for the repair piece. So this allows Public Works to have a standard set that they know if they're buying parts or en masse, they can just do this and have them ready to go. Also, the, one of the hydrants that we have currently in our repertoire in terms of the city is no longer made. Parts are becoming increasingly scarce. So we recognize that as a need to go ahead and spec, spec something out, put it in ordinance. So we have it nailed down for the next 10, 20 years.
Thank you. Further discussion or further questions?
Thank you.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertner, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance accepting the city of Norwood Fire Hydrant specification.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen?
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance? Mr. Gertner?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gertner. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the ordinance? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is a resolution of the city of Norwood, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250 OH. Mr. Gertner?
Make a motion, we have the first reading?
Motion by Mr. Gertner to have the first reading of the resolution. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mr. Gertner?
Yes, sir. I know Mr. Powers sponsored this, sent this through. If he could give us any background, I spoke to the Historical Society, but I think Mr. Powers is more acclimated with this.
Mr. Powers?
Yes, hello. So this is an effort supported by Hamilton County. They formed a commission to help make this celebration happen across the county, and they're asking us to support that. They have put together a large committee, I believe it has 35 or 40 individuals on it, headed up by the Clerk of Courts. So one of those members reached out to us to ask us if we would participate. I think that this is certainly something worth us being involved in. It doesn't cost the city any money to go out and support it. There is included in everybody's package some information about what those celebrations are. There are different themes for each month. It looks like a nice, fun way to celebrate the country.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All right. Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertner, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to have the first reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
A resolution of the city of Norwood of Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250-OH.
Thank you. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I saw. I saw.
Well, I'll be quiet, wait for just a second. I'll wait for that construction truck to go past out there. So it's, it's really, it is really refreshing to wake up every morning, go out on Montgomery Road and see that they've done another, you know, mile of lane and how quickly they're getting through that. So I come out of my house and jump on Williams Avenue, which is a pretty nice, smooth street, and go up to Montgomery Road, which is smooth as all heck. And then when I go out, I can go out and run across either Carthage or, or Smith. Both smooth, major thoroughfares. One of the things that we've always said is by, by taking care of these major thoroughfares and making them uncongestion, trying to regulate the parking during certain hours, we take cars off of our residential streets, off of the back streets. And so we've got streets that run and flow very well right now, and they're not pothole-infested. So hopefully you will look at the path that you've been going to, to, you know, to and from in and out of Norwood and try to, try to put that, put more of your regular travel onto some of the major thoroughfares and keep our neighborhoods quiet around the homes. Elm Avenue, the Elm Avenue Storm Drainage Project has went along very well. It's in, it's in pretty good shape right now. I, I think right now, the way it is, is, the way it's sitting right now, that if we had a major storm, we would not see any flooding on the streets over in those areas. So that is all connected up. There's some final work that they're doing on the actual detention or retention area. But then a big part, of course, is getting the streets cleaned up and repaved and curbs put back in place and sidewalks put back in place. And that is all part of the project, but I've been told it's going to take a little bit longer, of course. So we've got the improvement made. There should not be any flooding issues. The aesthetics and getting the streets back in shape is probably going to be, it's probably going to be through the spring, depending on the winter we have, which we could have an easy winter and they keep working and we keep moving. But that project, realistically, that lingering project in our community, that lingering flooding in our community for 50 years, as long as I've been around, there's been flooding over that area. I think it has been alleviated, so we should be in good shape there. The community center, I really want to, Mr. Gabbard and April Maloney are doing just gangbusters on the community center, the senior center. They sent me a picture today, and I think there were like 50 people in there for senior aerobics, and they've got so many more classes, and they've taken advantage of another fitness center that's closed down, and they're picking up more and more people all the time. And it's just, it's just nothing but good for Norwood. And, you know, it is Norwood residents, a majority of them are Norwood residents, And, you know, it is Norwood residents, a majority of them are Norwood residents, but a lot of them are just people who live around Hamilton County, around our community, that recognize, you know, Norwood's got so much to offer. So, they're doing a great job, and I really appreciate that. I have Worth Business, Worth Avenue Business District in here, and I know that they talked a little bit about that. But I got a lot of, I got a lot of calls over the last year, and that ward, you know, Ward Four, saying, "What are we doing here? It looks like these buildings, people are out walking their dogs, they're just walking." Like, some of these buildings are just gonna fall in on themselves. So, that's something where we engage Norwood together to collaborate with us, work with us, to try to come up with some solutions there. And there's a church right behind it, and, and actually, the church was heavily involved. They were trying to get some things going there, too, which is great. There's very, there's very much some interest in that business district there, and hopefully, we can come up with something really nice out of that. I know they're working hard on putting together some plans. So, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. They're talking to people, they're trying to make sure that it's done right. And then, I guess, the last part I had on here, and I know you guys don't like me to talk too long, Joe's always telling me, like, geez, come on. But, I'll talk a little bit about our Facebook page, the City of Norwood Facebook page, and communication, I think, is critically important, and a lot of people say, "Well, nobody's communicating with me." Well, I'm sorry, but we're not gonna knock on your door and communicate with you. You do have to reach out. Susan puts, councilperson Susan puts tons of stuff up here and ways to communicate, and there's, there's all sorts of open doors. Norwood has a Facebook page. We've had a Facebook page for quite a few years. And if you go to that Facebook page, you'll see, you'll see all the different notices that go out about it. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look it up real quick here, just on mine, the City of Norwood Facebook page, and if I scroll down through, well, the first thing that shows up, I'm already getting questions, I'm sure council members are getting questions, "When does leaf pickup start?" Oh, leaf collection, that's one of the first things, posted by the Superintendent of Public Works. October twentieth, the crews will be out picking up leaves, curbside leaf collection. That's the first posting that's here. But if I scroll down a little bit on this, I scroll on the City of Norwood Facebook page, there's just tons of information about what's going on in the City of Norwood. Pavement Condition Rating Study is underway right now. Did you know that? If you go to Norwood's Facebook page, it'll tell you. And if your next-door neighbor is asking, "What's going on with that?", you can say, "Hey, I've got a Facebook page," and I'll tell you what's going on. Here's another one, a community update, Elm Avenue Storm Sewer Project Process and See Improvements. So, they've got pictures, there's even pictures you can look at on your Facebook, on the City of Norwood Facebook page. It's all there. Now, that's not the only way to contact the City of Norwood, because we have a website. The City of Norwood has a website, we've had it for about five years, and the web, with the website, there's a newsletter link that you can go to. So, you go to the City of Norwood website. A lot of this stuff, people are, you know, normally, they understand, but it seems like it's being lost at times in Norwood. You go to the website, you click on the newsletter link, you can sign up to receive newsletters, and you'll get email blast about things that are going on, more communication. It's really, there's a lot of ways to communicate, but you do have to take a step and, and reach and try to find those things. And, but if you do, you'll be one of those informed citizens in the City of Norwood. We, we do, I mean, our departments are working hard to put information on there that is informative and helpful to people, and, and will continue to do that. But I don't, I don't mean, I'm not trying to sound, I guess, condescending or talking down to anybody, but I, I really wish that people would look at the Facebook page and sign up for the newsletters, because that's where the email blast come out, and you can stay informed. And you don't have to look at it every day, you can look at it once a month and get some good information that helps you understand and feel more of that, that community feeling that I think everybody wants to get. So, I hope that council members, I know this is your council meeting, I hope that you will share also, "Hey, did you look at the Facebook page?" And when you see it, a post that comes through on your Facebook page, share it, share it to other people, so they see it, and we'll just build that communication network even stronger than it is right now. So, that's, I think that's all I have.
All right, your time right now.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mayor Snyder? Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you for that update, Mayor, and, yeah, just wanna share the number of compliments that I've received working at Xavier from people who drive down Montgomery Road and say, "Oh, wow, what's going on in Norwood?", and are complimentary of that. So, I'm sure you hear from residents, but just wanted to further broaden that sphere of compliments for the work that has happened. One thing that I would be interested to ask about, I know Ms. Cope from Lincoln had some concerns about speeding. I, I myself found it surprisingly easy to reach a nice rate of speed on the, on the newly paved Montgomery Road. Is there any corresponding effort, let's say, from the police department to patrol that road, speed monitor that road? I know there are some speed signs, like there's one on Slane, one on Regent, things like that. Are there any sort of corresponding measures in the works to make sure that, as people learn to love Montgomery Road again, they don't learn to love it at too fast of a speed?
Yeah.
Mayor Snyder?
Thank you. Recently, at the, after the last council meeting, we, myself and the Safety Service Director were talking about that and talking about what, what tools do the police department have to put up that moving signs on. Noah Powers, you might want to step up and talk about that as the Safety Director, because he has had many discussions with the, the Police Chief about this, and as we get rid of the inverted speed bumps, we're, we're definitely running up against that challenge.
Mr. Powers?
Yes, so we, we are looking at acquiring a few more of those pole-mounted radar speed signs that are kind of movable around the city. We do have a speed trailer still in operation. So, we're continuing to move those around, and that has been probably the most effective tool that we have found for speed. I know that you can sit out and watch those, and people will hit them at a certain speed, and then their speed gets slower as they go by. So, those have been very helpful, we are looking at more of those, and as we do hear about issues with speeding in the area, we can focus our police efforts in those areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Along those lines, I will note that some of us have noticed the police presence that was on Robertson a couple nights ago. Not that I frequent Robertson Avenue to pick up children from working at a, well, in the area, but it was, it was noticed, not that I was speeding either, but I know, I'm sure the residents in that area who have addressed council about speeding along Robertson, I'm hoping appreciate the fact that there, there was police presence there, and I'm hoping that it did have an impact on cutting back on some of those speeders. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, before you all, I passed out before the meeting, just kind of a year-to-date income tax receipt summary, basically, it's kind of year-over-year for where we are versus where we were last year. So, and I enjoy passing, I enjoy passing out these this year, and just in general, I've been enjoying it, because we've been seeing, you know, really great results. So, our individual, I'll just kind of go back to categories, so the individual earnings taxes, which are about eight percent of the total, these are people that, you know, when people come in and file, they send their quarterly estimates, it's up about twenty percent, it's up twenty percent from last year, two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-dollar increase. Net profits up twenty-three percent, which in, you know, we've talked about that so many times, how volatile that is. Excuse me, yeah, twenty, twenty-three percent, and that's twenty-three percent of the total, and then withholdings up two-point-three percent, which is usually the most staple, just because it's based on employer. So, and that's about sixty-eight percent. So, total, we're up about seven percent from last year, about one-point-three million dollars, so we'll keep you updated on that, but, you know, always exciting news to hear, and we'll keep working hard on it.
Mr. Moore?
I'm wondering if Mr. Bonzal would like to comment on what, where that number is in comparison to the projections for the year?
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, yeah, and thank you, Mr. Moore. It's pretty, I mean, it's pretty significant above projections, I mean, we were only estimating kind of two percent increases in the financial recovery plan. I forgot exactly where we landed on, you know, when we passed the plan, but either way, it's definitely above the projection, so it's even above what's in the plan. What's the positive news for you all and for the city administration is that next year, you know, if we have to pass a new financial recovery plan, which I'm sure we will, you'll be able to, you know, put more things in there that, that you all want to see done, kind of in your all's, you know, your all's neck of the woods or in your all's wards. So, and I will say, like, on that note, and thanks to Mr. Moore for that, like, you know, it's really important if there are, like, and I think Finance Committee's already working on it, but, you know, if there are priorities that you all want to see in the budget, you know, I remember Ms. Bowles, Ms. Danfor was here a few months ago, and I was talking about Arborist, but whatever the priority might be, it's really important to communicate to that to the administration now, because by the time that we get to the point where it's ready for, you know, the full presentation to council, it's kind of hard to add a lot of those kind of things in there. So, I would just encourage you all to get your wish list in to Mr. Powers or the mayor, you know, as soon as possible, either individually or collectively as a council, because it's, yeah, I think it's important there. The other note, so tomorrow is the due date for those that filed for an extension for their federal tax return, so just, you know, the office is prepared, the office is ready for you, so just feel free to come on in, they're happy to help if you have any questions. And I did want to talk about one other item. So, you know, we've talked a lot about kind of development in the city lately, I mean, you all have, don't envy some of the positions that you all have been in these last few months, but, you know, there's been development that's happened in the city in the past, you know, talking right now about, you know, Rookwood specifically, you know, Rookwood Commons, Rookwood Pavilion, the first two kind of Rookwoods, along with the Office Tower and some of the restaurants over there, but south of Edmondson and south of Smith. You know, those had, when those were first built, there were CRAs that were put on, you know, some of those properties. So, I think they were about fifty percent CRAs, from my recollection, wasn't here, but, I was wise though, about fifty percent, I think they were about fifty percent CRAs that were there, they were on for a period of time, but those have since expired, since like 2011, I think the last one came off. So, those properties are fully, like, the value of the property, they're contributing the taxes to the different entities at the rates that anybody else would. And, you know, in, over the weekend, it was, or last week, it was stated by, you know, a member of the Board of Education that all of the Rookwood Project, is how it was phrased, only brings in to the schools four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. And the schools get about seventeen, a little bit over seventeen million dollars a year in property taxes. I think their budget's a little bit somewhere over thirty million, I don't remember the exact number, but, so of that seventeen million, you know, it was stated that only four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand comes from Rookwood. Well, you know, we've all been to Rookwood, we've all traveled around, like, that's a pretty dense part of Norwood, dense and just, you know, business, and, and it's a very dense part of Norwood that comes to valuations. If you look at property valuations per acre, it is, which Mr. Moore, I'm sure, I think we've talked about that before, but it's very high there. It's very valuable land, there's a lot of buildings on it, there's a lot of activity there. So, you know, it was stated four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I was like, that can't be right, right? So, there was a group of us that looked around and, like, evaluated what those figures actually were, and the figures are much closer to, so you can write this down if you want, but Rookwood, south of Edmondson, two-point-six to two-point-seven million dollars a year is, are the property taxes that are produced for our school district. So, that is, everything's south, that's the older part of Rookwood, two-point-seven million dollars a year. The newer part of Rookwood, so where it has the hotels, the Season Fifty-two, the Capital Grove, the kind of that strip mall-type retail building, plus the Rookwood Exchange Office Tower, and the one Rookwood luxury, the apartments that are on the end over there, that has a TIF on it today. So, that today, like, there's the parking garage that was built, and some of the other infrastructure that was built for that property, those were built through a bond, basically through a bond, and the city actually, the city technically owns that parking garage? The city owns the parking garage that's behind Rookwood Exchange today, and the payments, paying for that parking garage are, are from the TIF district. And the TIF district was agreed upon by the school district when it happened, so that we could not put a TIF district on that property and, and not fully compensate the schools of the school district if they did not agree to it at the time. And so, I just wanted to, you know, make that aware. There's another note here, too, just a second, but, that anyway, so that produces, last year, that produced about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the TIF district to, sorry, yeah, from the TIF district to the school district, so basically, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar payment. And thanks to our auditor, you can actually go to ohiocheckbook.com, and you can actually see, if you look at the fund and filter by Rookwood School Payment, you can see for the last four years how much the school payment's been from the Rookwood TIF Fund, right there. So, it was like, you know, it was a very helpful number to have that right there and on our fingers. So, anyway, so, so that's seven hundred, so like, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, so the actual number of what, if you combine the, you know, combine both of them, it's three-point-three to three-point-four million dollars a year from the school district. That's equivalent to about twenty percent, maybe a little bit less than twenty percent of the total property taxes that are generated to the school district come from the Rookwood Projects. And so, I think it's just important for, you know, the community, for all of us to know that, and frankly, for the Board of Education to know, like, how important development really has been for their budget. If we didn't have Rookwood, if we didn't have the, all of that development there, they did have some CRAs on them originally, not as generous as some of the ones today, and I know that's a separate conversation that we're all working on, but there would be a lot, there would be a much greater need to have to come to us as citizens for levies, to have to, like, further fund. There might have been a need to have to close schools, there might have been a need to, yeah, they officially wouldn't have been able to pay teachers as much, and maybe not retain teachers, when they're one of the top districts in the county for teacher retention, for having long-term teachers. So, as we kind of keep going forward, like, we're gonna, I'm gonna keep bringing numbers to you all and things like this, I just think it's really important that you all, elected officials in the city, to kind of know that and understand that, like, the development is not just development that's, you know, profiting people that are actually building it. It has a real impact on the future cash flows of the city, but especially of the school district, so it's a really big thing. But there was one thing, though, that was brought up about payments that were, like, missing payments or payments that were behind. So, with the Rookwood Exchange TIF District, there was a, there's a provision in it basically that, you know, we have to make the, we have to make the bond payments, so the bond payments are what they are to pay for the parking garage, like, you can't miss bond payments. So, the school district agreed at the time that if the revenues into the district were not enough, basically, to pay both the school district, the, the full amount that they were, they agreed to, to receive, and the bond payment, that the school district would get paid second. So, basically, the bond payments would make sure they got made, and then if there was a deficiency, it would get made up in later years. As of right now, there is close to a one-point-four, about a one-point-four million dollar kind of deficiency, basically, like, make-up payments that, that are needed, all based on the pre-existing formulas that were already in there. Part of the issue was that, you know, there were some, there were some challenges in some valuation. The Rookwood Exchange Office Building, you know, we all know, kind of like, with COVID, that not as many people are renewing leases, like, it's harder for them to necessarily sign tenants at the same price that they were signing them before COVID. So, the Rookwood Exchange Office Building, that valuation was, was reduced a little. And I think in previous years, there was also a couple of other challenges to valuations, but that challenged the revenues that went into the TIF District. One thing that's, that's looking forward, though, or looking positive for that, is that you all, as council, just approved, either this year, early this year or late last year, a refinance for the bonds for Rookwood Exchange. So, instead of, I think it was six-and-a-half or seven-and-a-half percent interest, the interest rate on the bonds are five percent. So, there's a lot of positives, so basically, starting next year or the year after, there should be enough money in those, in the fund at that point with the lower interest rate, so that those payments to the school district can be, starting to get caught up. And at, you know, there, the, I met with Andy Bressard today about this. If the, I'll find the exact numbers for you, just so you have it. At a very conservative two-percent increase in property values for the site every three years, so that's basically saying, like, when we get our values reassessed, a two-percent increase every three years, they would be fully paid back in like 2036. I think that is a very, quite a conservative estimate, like, two percent every three years, like, I think that it's likely the values will change more than that. I mean, he acknowledged that it was conservative, but he was basically just showing that the way that we restructured it, they are going to be, to get paid back. So, I just want to make sure that you all knew, kind of like, the full story, at least on that for now. I think there is gonna be more to come there, because, you know, we, as we're talking to the school districts, we're working with them, like, we all have to, like, be working with common numbers and numbers that are, that are saying we can't, you know. It was stated at the Norwood Togethers Candidate Night, there was a question about, should the school district or should the Board of Education have, like, more control over development in the city? And if we're gonna be working off numbers where the actual numbers are seven times what is kind of being stated, then there's no way that Board of Education should have any say on development, because they don't quite understand, or at least that member did not quite understand what they were talking about. So, and that's, and that's just the fact there. So, moving forward, I did want, again, I said, I'll keep bringing numbers to you, I just want to make sure that you all knew that, like, it was something that's really important to me, that you all have facts and, and like, understand it. The mayor and I were talking about it before the meeting as well, and, you know, he kind of acknowledges that as well, so, so that's that. And then, my last thing is, I got to go today to the world headquarters for Red Tree Investment Group, which is located in Norwood, they're our investment advisor, their office is not, it's in the American Laundry Building, but I got to go, I'm calling it the world headquarters, they just, that's just where they're located, they, they laugh about it. But I got to visit them and learn kind of some of the processes that they use, meet some of their traders and things like that at that. So, it's a really great experience, Ava from our office was able to come as well, so, you know, we're gonna hopefully have them come to a finance committee meeting as well at some point in the future, and I'll work with Jeff to try to schedule, like, what time of year, what time's the best for that, for that to happen, so. I'll take any questions or?
Questions for Mr. Bonzal? Mrs. Hoover?
I just want to thank you very much for taking the time to pull those numbers together. I absolutely agree that we need to make sure that we're all working with the same numbers, and so I appreciate you making sure that we have that.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Mr. Miracle, to follow the trend here, do you have your ten-minute topic ready?
I'm not gonna go ten minutes, but thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, I emailed to council the end-of-month reports for your review. If you have a chance, please review those. Any questions that you have, please reach out to me or Sharon Cambisi, and we will be discussing those at our 10:28 council meeting, finance committee meeting. Also, sent out a copy of the financial primer today. I doubt you've had a chance to look at it yet, it was late this afternoon, but that's something else we're gonna discuss on the 20th as well, seeking input from the finance committee. Also tomorrow, Sharon Cambisi and I will have our second team's call with Monday.com. We'll be getting the implementation process tomorrow. And this is something I've been talking about, that council will have the viewing rights to that. So you'll be getting emails here soon to sign up for that as well. Also, I'm happy to report that Joanne Hackworth, as you may or may not know, has been working for us a couple of days a week. She's doing a tremendous job going through our retention schedule and pulling boxes. And I know I've been talking about this since April, but yesterday, we had document destruction here. I think we got rid of approximately 20 boxes yesterday. And I believe there is about 16 still there. I sent out an email to see if any other department had a, that they would like to add. And thanks to Mr. Moore, the ball department had, I think, 11, if I'm not mistaken. So we had a big day with document destruction. They will be back here soon. Also, we did have three updates to SSI VIP. Like, the TA Brown and Norcom team, those are complete. Let's see. Beginning in January, thanks to Mr. Powers, we have a work-study student from Xavier coming. And this, their salary will be paid for by Xavier. And we are going to start working on the auditor's website. Needs a little professional love. So looking forward to the student coming in and helping us out with that. We have some things on there, but I think there's, there's a lot more things that we would like to put on there for our transparency. We already have Ohio Checkbook on there and some other things, like our audits. I think we have past 25 years on there. So, but there are some other things that we'd like to put on there as well. So looking forward to that in January. And then finally, our new accounting specialist, Ariana Standifer, started on October 6th. Really excited to have her join the team. So if you, if you have the opportunity, stop by the auditor's office and say hello to her. When you walk in, she's the first person that you'll see. So we're excited to have her, and if you could just welcome her as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? All right, Mr. Moore.
I don't have anything in particular to report, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or if anybody wants to hear more about TIF deals and the way those are structured, I'd be happy to talk about that, too. No takers? Okay.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover.
You know, I've got some stuff, but I did see Mr. Moore's hand.
Yeah, I'm trying to get the slide, sure.
Oh, unfinished business. Again with that. All right, else what I can do? Super excited. We have over 1,100 respondents so far. We sent it out to Norwood Schools again, and we've gotten quite a lot of responses from that. It's being sent out to Xavier off-campus living folks. So we're still gathering information. So feel free to share it with your friends and nippers. I like giving that count up. This is more informa, oh, I thought I deleted this. Did we talk about this last time? Apologies. Okay, so this is the information that Xavier passed out to their students, off-campus living folks. And Mr. Moore and I have talked about getting together to do a community discussion. Council member Winterbauer and I, I did that before. But to have, perhaps not in as stuffy a setting as this, but maybe at happy, somewhere a little more community-oriented, where we can have a conversation with some of Xavier leadership, as well as some off-campus folks, and talk about the ways that we can connect better. I love that we'll be having Xavier intern here. I think that that's a real opportunity for us. It's a brain trust that's right next door. So let's, let's use those minds. So we're continuing to work on these relationships. It's gonna be an ongoing process. But if you're interested, we'll be having that, I'm hoping, next week. We'll figure out days and times. This, super exciting. The reboot recycling has been installed. This is behind the Norwood Board of Health. You can take your, I hate to talk about this, it's all coming back to me now. You can drop off your televisions, your old keyboards, your cell phones, and they will remove the data. And I recommend you do your own data removal, but they will also remove your data and then recycle it. This is a really great opportunity for us to do this right here in Norwood. And then this past weekend, there was the Free on Tired drop-off, which I hope folks took advantage of.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mrs. Franzen.
I will let Mrs. Bowling know about the economic development thing that has been put into her committee since she's out here. And I figure we'll probably get an email from her arranging a date for that. So just wanted to make sure you knew that it will be communicated.
Thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Snyder.
I'm hoping that Ms. Franzen will talk a little bit about the race and volunteering for the race.
I was, but I was, I was waiting for other people to go first. But thank you. Once again, we find ourselves in October, only 20 days away from the best 5K in Norwood and the only 5K in Norwood, the Jim of the Highlands 5K. You know it, you love it. Your mildly inconvenience on Saturday, November 1st, but for a good cause. We have over 200 runners and walkers already that have signed up. So we need more, and we need volunteers. Volunteers are the lifeblood of this nonprofit. None of us get paid. We do this for the love of the game. And because of, we just have gluttons for punishment, I guess. We would love to have you or your organization join us if you are an organization who is like a sports team or a small nonprofit. We are happy to donate to your sports team from the proceeds of the race, as that's part of our mission, if you can contribute or say that at least eight adults are able to volunteer on the day of the race. We need people before the race. So if you want to run and walk, you can volunteer before the race and still do that. If you're not a runner or much of a walker, we need you on the race route to help direct traffic and make sure that our race route remains safe. We will have police officers from Norwood at all of the really major intersections, like Williams and Coral. But at the smaller ones, we need, we estimate it about 100 to 120 volunteers every year. So every little bit helps. If you are a person who is a sports team coach and you want to get some of that money, if you go to our website, norwoodrun.com, and say that you are part of an organization, we will count up the number of people with your organization and disperse the funds accordingly. So hope to see you there. It's gonna be a beautiful day, I've already decided. And it's gonna be a blast. We'll have some local musicians, free food, free pizza. Ron Murphy will be slinging free burgers from Indian Mountain Cafe. And Ryan Geist will be providing some beer. Every runner and walker gets one free beer if they are 21-plus after the race. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to thank the organizers of last week's Meet the Candidates event. There was an event last Thursday. And I think every person who is going to appear on any Norwood ballot, you know, based on where you live, and including the county races, was there. And I, you know, just was really grateful to participate in that. Pleased to meet some new folks who were there as attendees. And overall, just think it was a really respectful, positive event with a lot of caring people and a lot of really nice ideas about the future of the city. And, yeah, just wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Hoover.
I got a couple, thank you. The first is, voting is now live here in Norwood. I love the fact that the Board of Elections is now in the heart of Hamilton County in Norwood. These are the dates and times, and it's easy in, easy out. Again, it's right here in Norwood. I forwarded information on to Mary Ronan with the Norwood Schools because they always look for students 17-plus to vol, excuse me, to work. And they can be paid $225. And the school district with the most students wins a pizza party and a plaque. And I thought that would be really lovely if Norwood could bring that plaque. But you can also be an adult and be an election night worker. You can be a poll worker. And I encourage folks to go to their website to check it out. It's all part of our civic duty. I sat in on a webinar, ooh, a couple of weeks ago, that was put on, on how, excuse me, homelessness in Hamilton County. I was happy to see Mr. Powers, as well as Carolyn from the Board of Health was also on that. And there are a couple of slides that I took copies of to share because I thought it was really interesting information. Norwood has such a vast, we have a real diversity in our population in terms of very wealthy, comfortable, as well as some very poor and struggling families and, and an increase in homelessness. So this is just for the average one-bedroom in Norwood, spending 30% of income on housing, which is sort of the industry standard. A worker can afford a one-bedroom apartment for $1,535 a month if they're making $29.51 an hour, working 40 hours a week. The typical Norwood renter makes $19.56 a week. We'd need to work 60 hours to afford that apartment. And the Norwood minimum wage worker only makes $10.45 an hour. Therefore, we'd need to work 113 hours a week for that apartment. This is just information. There's many, many pieces to the puzzle, but I thought this was an interesting one when we're talking about some of our most vulnerable folks. And if you can switch to the next slide, this is another one that shows where Norwood is in terms of the rest of Hamilton County. This is under households. Percentage of households pay more than 30% of their income for housing. And then we have the severely burdened, which is paying more than 50% of their income on housing. So if you can see where Norwood lands in terms of our renters and owners, Norwood has sort of traditionally had about half and half. That number has shifted over the, over the years. But Norwood has always had a pretty significant rental population. And you can see that those renters are the ones who are really struggling. So again, this is just information that I got, I wanted to share. I'm, I've already had some conversations with Chief Sumner. I'm looking forward to meeting with Mr. Powers to talk about in the Housing Committee, as well as just as a member of council, what are the ways that we can address this most holistically? What are the ways that we can address those dealing with homelessness in a way that is sustainable, that is respectful, that is effective? So just wanted to share some of that info. That's it on that. Oh, and these are just, I love this list. It's a group, it's a list of all the different agencies in Hamilton County that take a part in dealing with homelessness. And you can see there's a huge, huge list. So there's many, many organizations. And it's important that we know who does what because it's important that we get folks to the right place. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of agencies out there that want to help. These are all going to be experiencing greater financial challenges. But right now, that's, those are the ones that we have. And this, I've shared this before, Street Reach. This is one of the most effective ways to connect, connect those experiencing homelessness with services. It is an app on the phone, which I have. It's kind of like C-Click Fix. If you can only have two apps on your phone, please let them be C-Click Fix and, and this one. And the way that it works is you gather information on, on an individual who is experiencing homelessness, and it, and it gets them in touch with the right organization. Disproportionately, veterans and those with mental health challenges are represented in this group. And so those go to very specific agencies, as well as the homeless youth, which we do also have. And so this connects them with those services. So I highly encourage folks to be utilizing that. I think that's all I have. And then my last thing, I saw on Facebook, every year, people ask, when is Halloween in Norwood? It's always on Halloween. I don't know if the mayor makes an official proclamation for the hours.
Council will pass a resolution at the next meeting.
Oh, we will? Okay, well, folks want to know now. So we're sharing with folks now, Trick or Treat is on Halloween night, the 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00. Please keep an extra eye out for our, for our young ones. We have kids darting between cars, and it's always sort of dusk at that time. So you can share that that's when Trick or Treat is. And that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? All right. Moving on to communications. We have several regarding liquor permits. And the first is regarding the Gatherall LLC. Assuming everyone has seen the emails that were sent out regarding various departments' responses. So we will go ahead and take these one at a time in the order for which they appear on the agenda. So Gatherall LLC. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we need a motion to receive and file, and with no objections?
That is your motion?
Yes, sir.
To receive and file with no objections.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. It is the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding Legazadera LLC, Legazadera Latin Club. I like it.
Mr. Gertner?
Make a motion to receive and file with no objections?
Motion by Mr. Gertner to receive and file without objections. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I see the question from Mr. Wagers asking when, if they are open or if they have. I was just curious if that had been answered.
I am not sure who on the email chain would have replied back to that with that answer.
It was just a, does it impact?
Correct.
I was just wondering if we have that information. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertner, seconded by Ms. Royce, is to receive and file without objection. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item, Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding 369 Marathon LLC. Mr. Gertner?
Make a motion to receive and file with objections? Is that the appropriate motion if I've got concerns?
Yes, and then we want to probably note that a hearing is requested in the county seat.
How do I make that motion?
To receive and file with objection, requesting the hearing in our county seat.
Thank you, sir, I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Gertner?
Just for the good of the order, the Tax Department and the Fire Department both have stated objections to the Marathon Station on Norwood Avenue.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
I'm glad you communicated that they met.
Yes, I just wanted to say, we sent an email to council that noted that they had definitely become in code compliant. They had paid their permanent fees as required by Ohio Fire Code, and they had corrected all their outstanding fire code violations. So we then removed our objection to it.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Franzen?
I'd like to ask Mr. Bonzel, have, do you know of the tax issues with this business?
Basically, just filing. So I will, yeah, right now, there's no, we don't have a record of it. So our objection would still stand. So it'd be, we'll, I'll make sure that they've been sent to, like, with, if you all object, I'll also make sure that they get sent a letter just telling them that that's the reason. And I think in general, they'll probably bring it up today quite quickly so that they can just, you know, I don't know if they're settled in ownership interest or what, the transfer is to the same place. So I'm sure they'll probably get it taken care of pretty quickly once they're notified.
Mrs. Franzen?
So if they come into compliance, what would be the process by which you would rescind our objection, should we make it tonight?
Mr. President? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. If they come into compliance and deal with that, and let the Law Department know, and we can let the Board know and cancel the hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Braden? Thank you, Mr. President. Questions for the, Mr. Bonzel, please. So are they, is it, is your objection that they have not filed? Or is your objection that they owe money?
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it's, whenever Tim uses the, or the...
Yeah, it's-- whenever Tim uses, or the tax commissioner uses the phrase, "Bring their account up to date," it's basically meaning that they have-- they either haven't filed at all, or they haven't filed lately. So that's kind of what that terminology means. So he is very-- that's the issue, they need to just file, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertin, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to receive and file this letter with objection, requesting the hearing in the county seat. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is a letter from Mayor Victor Schneider regarding September mayor's court fines. Mrs. Franzen?
And we will-- we receive and file the letter as if read?
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to receive and file the letter as if read. Mr. Braden?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. The next item is the communication regarding Montgomery and Maple, the senior 55-plus affordable housing development. And I'm not going to have the letter read again, but I know that was in the event there were objections, so we can go ahead and open the floor for discussion on this matter. Mrs. Franzen?
I didn't have any objections with this letter, but I will make a motion to receive and file the letter with no objections. Is that the correct way? I apologize.
Then, Mr. Moore, that supices.
This is-- and for the record, this is just a letter of intention, essentially. It's not a floor plan or any extra information with that. It is the intent of what they plan to make on this property, but no specifics beyond kind of the basics.
Great. Any further discussion? Mr. Gertin?
Mr. Bonzel?
Mr. Bonzel? Yeah, so I just wanted-- I was not able to be at one of the last meetings that you all have where this has been talked about, but I did just want to note that I don't think that this property has a planned development overly on it, and-- which is probably good considering what we've learned at this point. And I don't think that, like, there's going to be floor plans that are going to come to council or to any committee unless you all ask, you know, for them to come to a committee, but not by default, at least. So like, I don't think there's-- there's not a role right now that I know of, and I just want you all to know this, you know, for full transparency before you all vote. There's not a role from the planning process, I think, that you all are going to necessarily have in this. It could be that there's a-- they might have a zoning appeal that they have to go to BZA for, but it won't be the same as like was with the townhomes, kind of the PLK. So yeah, take with what you want, but let you know.
Thank you. Mr. Gertin?
It's my understanding, if somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, that this is mostly about them seeking their funding for the project.
Correct. Mr. Moore?
But just out of curiosity, what would even be the type of objection that one would make about a correspondence like this?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. It would be, since they're talking about whether they're going to give them some affordable income housing tax credits or a break on some kind of funding that way, it would be essentially the kinds of things I'm going to guess most communities would send, is like, "We don't want that here." I'm not sure if that agency would take that, would take that into account, or if it would matter to them. It might, to a certain extent, especially if it was concentrated in, you know, some of the things where projects can be concentrated in a certain area. There could also be a thing that it doesn't, it doesn't comply with the zoning, it doesn't, it's a bad project, we don't think the developer is a trustworthy organization. There's any number of things you could. I'm not sure what this agency in particular is looking out for. I would guess that there's a problem with the developer more than anything else, or whoever the management company is going to be. But I could see communities, you know, if you were in the West End, for example, I could see definitely filing an objection, "We don't need more of this here, it should be spread out around the city," that kind of an objection. But again, I have no clue what they consider the factor is important to them.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. A question through the chair to Mr. Bonzel. Could you clarify, you said that we wouldn't be getting any floor plans, and I barely heard that response, so I'm just trying to follow exactly what you said. Could you clarify exactly why? So this is a letter of intent that we are getting here. Can you just clarify what you said a little bit? I had a hard time hearing you, sorry.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted just to make sure, because I heard some comments that were made at the last meeting that I could not attend, and it was about what, you know, this looking different than potentially, you know, like maybe a past project, but I just wanted to make sure that it was just fully known that this is not necessarily going to be council involvement. So if for some reason you all did have a very strong opinion on this in one way or another, and probably could have sent a letter of support, too, like, this is probably the time to, like, talk about it, because, you know, it'd be Ohio Housing Finance Agency, well, yeah, they're probably going to maybe ignore, "We don't want that kind of housing here" kind of things. There could be, there could have been legitimate concerns, and I don't know what those concerns are, but I just wanted to make sure you all knew that this is kind of like one of your only voices that you have if there were strong objections. That was all. It's not that you have to take action, it's not that, but you're limited because it doesn't-- they don't have to come to you all for zoning. They've got the zoning that they need.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. So are you saying that the-- are you saying that we're changing the way that, is this different than prior, us looking at floor plans and things like that? Are we changing this process? Is that what you're saying, that it's changed, and now we are not involved, and this is administrative duties, and now we're changing the process? Is that what basically you're telling me?
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so, you know, when we look at like the zone, like building plans and zoning and things like that, there's kind of two paths a lot of times they go down. Like, one of the paths can be that, the traditional path is just that the zoning, you know, developers look at the zoning that's on the property, they make plans that they feel like will fit the zoning, or fit kind of somewhat close to the zoning. And then if there are any variances that are needed because they don't meet the zoning, then, you know, the city, we have a Board of Zoning Appeals, if-- I'm sure you've been at times. The Board of Zoning Appeals will review it and say yes or no, we'll give you that variance, or we will not give you that variance. I'm just saying that that's the traditional way, that's the path that this is going to go down versus the path that we've all been seeing in the last few months when it comes to the PED. That's a different path. So yes, you won't be getting building plans in your packets or digital building plans or anything like that on this one, looking for a council approval, because I'm almost certain that they're going down the traditional path of filing building plans with the Building Department if it's not already filed, and going through the variances if they need them through the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's no council involvement right now in that. So I want, I am just letting you all know, as a former council member, and wanting to make sure that you all have all the information on that. So that is it.
Further discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I just wanted to read the project narrative for those at home who don't have this in front of them. So this is the space of the Old Quality Inn. It says, "Montgomery and Maple is a 178-unit affordable senior living community in Norwood, co-developed by Burge &amp; Health, MPLK Communities. The property will feature two four-story buildings with interior corridors, housing 112 one-bedroom and 66 two-bedroom units, restricted to those earning between 50% and 70% AMI. Designed to foster a vibrant and supportive environment, the development will serve as a gateway to the Norwood community and offer amenities such as a fitness center, computer lab, business center, outdoor community gathering area, green space, Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi, and accessibility features tailored to senior residents. They are looking for municipal tax, real estate tax incentives and supplemental funding. It will provide Norwood seniors with an affordable, community-focused place to call home." Clearly, that's their narrative, but that is the overall plan of that space.
All right, and we had, Mrs. Franzen, I know you had mentioned, made the motion to receive and file without objection. Was there a second for that? Mrs. Hoover?
I didn't, but I can.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
Is that a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
No.
With a vote of five in favor and one against, the motion does carry. We have one absent member. Mrs. Franzen?
Make a motion to excuse our absent member and hope that Shelley is doing good.
Do we have a second? Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Hoover?
I motion we adjourn.
And that's second. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.